We are returning to open session for Wednesday, June 12, 2024. Kathy, is there any public comment?
There is none.
All right, with that being said, do we have any changes to the agenda? That no changes. Martha, can you do the superintendent's report, please?
Absolutely.
And I apologize for sounding discombobulated.
All right. So first thing I have on superintendent's report is a student enrollment report here in June 2024. This is something that the board looks at, particularly in these summer months where enrollment, and I'm good with that, I'm gonna keep that, where enrollment is obviously coming in with our new kindergarten students. So what you would have here is kind of a year-to-year comparison. The one grade level that looks lower is kindergarten, and part of that is because kindergarten enrollment sort of always goes throughout the summer, and sometimes we get a lot of enrollments. We're comparing June data with August data. I anticipate by August that our kindergarten enrollment will have gone up. But right now, kind of a nice distribution in terms of how class sizes would look across the grade levels. The other thing I just, I know, I feel like people always ask what goes on in a school district during the summer months, so I just wanted to share a few highlights of our summer planning. Obviously, being here tonight, you realize that the Central Hauser construction is well underway outside here at the back of the school, so that's a huge project. We have a significant tuck pointing project going on at Ames. Summer school, for all those reasons, will be at Blithe this year. That will start in mid-July. Actually, the introduction to Hauser class, though, will be at Hauser. Sort of have worked out how to use just the front of the school, because we know that's a really important class to be able to offer here on site, so we're doing that. We are finalizing hiring, I always like to say "finalizing," filling the vacant positions we do have, and so new teacher mentoring will actually be the week before school starts, and so we're already making plans with our new staff, and I'm already really excited about the new staff that I've had the opportunity to meet and that we're hiring, so that's great. I know Nora and Kasmirac Gorman are organizing a pretty robust social-emotional learning teacher work project, which is great, that teachers want to come in during the summer months and really focus in on refining our social-emotional learning curriculum, and that sounds like a great project. We're inviting teachers who want to attend Responsive Classroom, which is another kind of philosophy or framework for interacting with children in a way that really promotes a strong classroom climate and culture and strong social-emotional learning for students. We have a number of students, we pay their registration for that if they're interested. It's a four-day workshop, so it's a pretty significant time commitment. Our instructional coaches are coming in to do some work over the course of the summer, and our district leadership team has already worked on our empowered teams, they've already done some professional learning around the new English Language Arts curriculum at the elementary level, so it hasn't been quiet yet, and I don't think it's going to get very quiet over the course of the summer. So lots going on. I added one other item from the agenda under superintendent's report, I can add things that come in here at the last minute, not no board action and just a quick update. I received today four letters that came from eighth-grade English Language Arts classes at Hauser, and my understanding is they were working on persuasive letters, so they have written letters to the Board of Education, which I can share. Out of the four of them, two of them are recommending a four-day school week. Actually, I was just at superintendent's workshop, and superintendents in Missouri, this is a hot topic in Missouri, that the four-day school week is a reality. So those letters are interesting. Another student wrote about the importance of decreasing the amount of homework, and then another student wrote about the importance of learning gun safety. So interesting letters. These are eighth graders that graduated, so you can't and we can't necessarily get back to them. I suppose we could by finding their home addresses, but anyway, I'll share those, but thought that was interesting, and the letters are nicely done. There's some references that they don't include, so I have to go back and, they're gonna have to dig those out for me. But anyway, I wanted you to know that some of the topics that are on the minds of our students right now, and that is the superintendent's report.
There was an editorial in the RB newspaper as well for a four-day work.
Was there? Yeah. And I had heard it from a staffing perspective, that it was a way to recruit teachers. The students write about it from their own, that it would be better for their mental health, that it would be better for them to have the opportunity to sort of solidify and practice some of their learning, so it was interesting.
I had heard something, and I can't remember the exact source, I wanna say it was a podcast, it might have been, it might have been, I'm not sure, but it was also used as a way to provide teachers with incentive when finances at districts were restricted and they couldn't give raises, so instead they give time off.
I think it would have to be, and I can help these students understand, I think it would have to be legislated, because it's, they would have to change the amount of required school days. Or you would just have to go more weeks and keep the same number of days. Really, are kids going to school fewer days?
In the case I was referring to, it was specifically reduced amount of time to work.
States who have, like, only one month of summer break or something like that, are they, do they go for, like, in Arizona?
Yeah, it's such like year-round school schedules, like, there are some Illinois schools that have tried it or piloted, and they're not going to school any less days, it's just a different structure for how the time off is.
Marlo, it's interesting you bring up Arizona, because they do, like, so I was actually thinking, like, a four-day school week, that would just really make it year-round school, wouldn't it?
Right.
Because in Arizona, they go five days a week, but they have a very different structure. One of my, one of the people on my team lives in Phoenix, and they get, like, a one-week break in winter, and they get a break in February, they get a break in April, so they don't have, like, a typical spring break, but they have more breaks throughout, and then they have a shorter summer break. So that's almost what this is kind of sounding like, but, yeah, the legislature, like, this is all legislated, so I don't, I don't think it was really our call, is it?
Yeah, yeah. I think we could do it, but we'd have to go a lot more weeks a year.
Interesting concept.
Yeah.
We have a lot of clamoring for four-day work weeks, so, yeah.
No, I'm just Googling Arizona, they have to do 180 school days, so.
Yep, but they break it up very differently, which I wouldn't be opposed to, I kinda like the more, like, week-long segmented breaks and less summer pause between school years and stuff like that, but interesting, thank you for that.
Missouri, 142 days, if they go the four-day week. So interesting, interesting shifts and changes happening, not in Illinois right now.
Martha, before we move off the superintendent's report, just, and you all might not have this top of mind, but new kindergarten registrants, does there continue to be any interest in the half-day option that we must, you know, kind of provide? I know when we first moved to it, there was maybe a handful fewer, and I kind of assumed it would become obsolete over the course of time.
I haven't heard this year, Angela, have you?
I haven't heard any.
I think we ended last year with, what, three, three students, I believe, so I think it's, that's a great question, I don't know. Usually families will come in, Nancy, I can hear her, when families come in and register, she'll explain to them there's a half-day option, and then she'll usually let us know, and I haven't heard any yet this summer. You do wonder if it'll become obsolete.
Yeah, I mean, I remember when we were thinking about it, it was like, you know, within two or three years, many of the districts that had moved to full day saw that everybody within two to three years kind of opted into that.
Yeah, I'll keep you posted on that.
May the Board Secretary please read the consent agenda.
Sure. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes of the following previous meetings, May 1st, Committee of the Whole Meeting, the May 15th Regular Business Meeting, along with the May 15 minutes from the Closed Session Meeting, the Personnel Report as presented, the Payables Pre-List as of May 31st, along with the Payables Pre-List as of June 12th, the West 40 Regional Safe Schools Contract for 2024-25, and the Disposal of Surplus Property.
Would anyone like to remove any items off the agenda? Otherwise, Kathy, please call the roll. Oh, could someone make a motion to approve the consent agenda? Thank you. Kathy, please call the roll.
Okay. Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
And Ms. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, are there any board member comments? Seeing as there are none, old business. Math curriculum supplemental tools approved, we have an action item, approval for the new curriculum, is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Do you want a recap of what that was about?
We should, I think we talked about it, so.
After what we talked about, yeah. Yeah, I can give the recap.
Can you, please?
Absolutely. So that was a discussion, that was a recommendation made by Dr. Dolezal regarding the math supplemental educational materials that they had. We had been using DreamBox for K through 8, but the 6 through 8 teachers were feeling like it wasn't enough for the junior high age, so they're switching that to IXL and then using Alex, I'm guessing that's, for the, I was gonna stay gifted, but that's advanced math students, instead of DreamBox in both of those cases. Is there anything else I missed? Okay.
No, this was specific to just 6 through 8, right?
Correct.
And just supplemental to the curriculum, so these are additional tools, they're not the core curriculum.
Right, right, sorry, yeah.
Any other discussion? Kathy, can you call the roll?
Okay. Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
And Ms. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item is the Chronic Absenteeism Report.
Right, so we, do you want, you want to come up, Don? Don and the tech team have compiled this for us, and what we have now is we start to be able to see a little bit of a trend data, if two years makes a trend, but looking at last year's data, all three trimesters, and looking at all three trimesters of the 23-24 school year as well.
Yeah, essentially just kept the format the same, so it's just really updated to be about the final total. So trending downward throughout the year, which I think was also in previous years.
Yeah, so there's, I think it is worth noting that there is a decrease in the overall percentage of number of students that are chronically absent.
Yeah.
Which is good news, that's our goal, and I think, you know, we talked about the sort of multi-layered efforts, Hauser specifically having the ALAP, a person dedicated to helping students that are perhaps behind academically due to absences and other factors. It's hard to draw the line, isn't, you know?
And if you have students that, let's say a student gets sick for a week, you know, in the first trimester, or the 10% of the total number of days, and then they're, you know, healthier the rest of the time, or, you know, it's, or they're out at certain times of the year. We are looking at making some changes to our just attendance coding, so we could gather a little bit more information from it. It wouldn't change your state reporting, the state doesn't ask for the information, but just by having more codes will let us know, well, why was that student absent? And we can get more data, so we're gonna look to start that next year, so we can get a little bit more granular with the type of information we're reporting.
And we're gonna talk about it a little bit more, too, with our key performance indicators related, because we've used attendance as one of our indicators around social-emotional learning, so I know Nora will have more commentary to share there as well, but it is absolutely a multi-layered approach, I think it's a hot topic, I know it's, through a lot of media sources, we're hearing stories. Nora and Pete Gatz, Principal at Central, are also both participating in a national cohort that's looking at chronic absenteeism and talking brainstorming and problem-solving on different ways to address it, and heard some pieces of that myself at a workshop run by the same organization, and just this idea of, you know, this compassionate and supportive approach, that the, sort of the old, I'll say the old-fashioned, you know, more punitive approach, sending truancy letters and threatening truancy officers and so, is really not what works for students that are chronically absent, so these are often students that are either their significant factors in their own well-being, in their family's well-being, academic well-being, et cetera, so again, not a, not a linear issue. Some of the improvements, I think, are also post-COVID, right? We kind of were wondering, the impact COVID had, you know, and there's talk about this, the impact COVID had, just in sort of the valuing around school, but also around health, wellness, absence, stay away when you have a sniffle, you know, so people have talked about, like, we were kind of changing our messaging, like, come to school. Don't come to school if you have a fever, don't come to school if you have other intestinal issues, but come to school. If you're feeling a little bit, you know, not great, come to school.
I think that would be a great message for, like, the school nurses to provide at the start of the year, to just kind of remind parents of that.
And I know last, this past, I think maybe for the first time, our principals really talked about attendance at the back-to-school night around just the cost of frequent absences, the cost to children academically and socially. So we'll continue to do that, and that's one of the things that, right, that this cohort group is really recommending is sort of what they call nudges, or just different communication tools around continuing to remind people how important it is to come, so.
I was really encouraged by the progress. I mean, like, if you think about where we were at at the end of last year, I think it was, oh, 15 and a half percent of our students were chronically absent, and by the end of this year, we're down to 11% of our students being chronically absent, like, I know a lot of work has gone into that, and, you know, even from the beginning of the year to now, it seems like there's a steady march in the right direction, and so that's really encouraging to see, and I appreciate all the work that you've done and that the administrative team has done to.
I definitely appreciate the work done, but I can't help but wonder, is this part of a correction post-COVID that things are returning to normal, reverting to the mean, perhaps?
Right, and it's anecdotal, it's a flavor, it's a feeling, but I really feel that, I feel the end of this school year really represented what I would just describe as a much more normal ending to a school year, you know?
Yeah, I mean, you might actually see that the new norm might be just a higher chronic absenteeism, whether it's because there's a different level of perception of, you know, even having a student attend. Well, you know, there is more with more remote learning, oh, you know what, you know, they can catch up later, I think there could be a change in just the perception of overall of being in school versus not being in school. It'll be interesting to see if it goes back to the normal, or if the new normal just becomes a little bit higher than that was.
For reference, 2018, 2019, I think, chronic absenteeism, the percentage was around eight and a half percent, so.
In this document, it said 2019 was 9%.
So we're still not there?
Yeah.
It's interesting that the average daily percent is pretty similar across all the schools, but then our chronic absentee seems to track fairly linearly against school population. Have you seen anything in the other that explains that?
No, so it's, so I think what you're saying, right, is Blithe and Hollywood, where our smaller schools have less chronically absent students. And there is an interesting question, if somehow a smaller school has a different pattern of engagement, I don't think so, but the data would point you to that question.
Well, and I'm even asking, have you seen that, rather than try and pick our, our own population apart, is there commentary in the other districts that you talk to about that?
Yeah, no, and I haven't seen it in the data, though it's smaller schools are somehow more supportive, and therefore kids are not as absent as frequent, I have not heard that at all, but it shows up at two of our schools, which is interesting. And middle school kind of makes sense, the age of the students, sort of they're practicing more independence.
Yeah, maybe.
In all kinds of different ways.
Yeah, all kinds of different ways.
I think what I were talking about is there also, do you look at, like, students that have sibling that is in middle school? Does that also change if they are, you know, home more, does that make, oh, hey, you know, this is other things that we can, we can look at.
Yeah, sometimes the attendance issue is a family issue, right? Whether or not it's because the middle schooler is experiencing something different, or is it just maybe a family that's struggling to get, you know, life organized enough to get to school on a regular basis, something, so, yeah, it's interesting to look at it, I appreciate that the sort of, like, the whole nation has taken a closer look and honed in on this. The pandemic did do something, not just around illness, but it seemed to do something to the value around schooling, and I think just continuing to find our ways to really engage students and families and remind everybody the importance of being in school.
Yeah, I mean, the seven and a half percent, nearly seven and a half percent drop, it's sizable, so, go in the right direction.
That's great.
Thanks, Don. And we'll probably hear a bit more, not to steal Nora's thunder, but, you know, yeah.
Any other thoughts on that? If not, we then have the IASB Board Self-Assessment follow-up, and just so everybody knows, the Board did a self-assessment last week, and internally discussed Board performance and how we all interact, as well as interact with the superintendent, and then there are also some board goals that we've always had that can discuss how we, how we move forward as a unified board, and this is an action item, and we approve this every year, and the last, yeah. Do we have a motion to reapprove the board agreements?
So moved.
Second? Any other discussion?
Just to clarify, I think we're saying reaffirmed, I don't remember any changes were made, am I correct on that?
I think the only thing that we mentioned was in the Board Superintendent Communication in terms of when we will receive the Board Packet and Supporting Documentation, this still mentions Friday, and I know we've sort of tried to get away from that practice, so do we want to solidify it and memorialize it in writing that we move to, what is it, Thursday?
Thursday.
Yeah, I'll make that change from the Friday to Thursday.
Okay. Yeah, so I think we should make that change in this document, thank you again for bringing that up.
On the Board Expectations and the Board Superintendent Communications, the last bullet point is merged under what the Board expects with the second to last.
Oh, the bullet. Yeah, I see, there's just a formatting, right, that bullet needs to be dropped lower, okay. Kathy, on that last, yeah. Not sure all that squished in there.
With those two changes, is there any other commentary? All right, implementing those changes, Kathy, can you call the roll?
I certainly can.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second change, I know the Friday to Thursday thing, but what was the other one?
On board discussion and deliberation, sorry, that's not it.
Just a formatting thing.
The last bullet point was missing, I think.
The reasonable request for additional information will be satisfied in a timely manner, and it's just, it merged with the superintendent's.
Like a formatting issue.
Oh, yeah, got it, got it.
Okay, so Ms. Kalik?
Aye.
Ms. Claps?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
And Ms. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, then we have the, and just so, sorry, I'm gonna add this, there's also a summary from Dr. Natalie about what kind of our goals and what we discussed at that self-assessment, and then we have the Strategic Plan Scorecard.
All right, so that's our final piece of information on the agenda for tonight, and I don't want to make light of it, because it really represents a whole year's worth of work and progress toward goals, so, but I thought it would make sense if Angela would come and just share information about Goal 1, and then we can kind of go through the five goal areas, and Board, if you have any questions or comments to share, please do. So what you all have attached in the board book is our scorecard, this is something we started doing last year around, just a visual that then will go on our website in terms of our progress toward our goals, but also a summary, a narrative summary of the goal areas and the progress and direction based on our goals.
Good evening, everybody. So Goal 1 looks at the, mostly the academic pieces of our strategic plan, and looks at how are we looking at growth and achievement from kindergarten through eighth grade, and then how we're faring with our students' placement in high school. This year, for the 23-24 year, it was this third year of collecting data on FastBridge assessment for our kindergarten and first graders, and so what the trend data is showing is that we are, student growth on FastBridge from their fall composite score in both reading and math, to their spring composite score in reading and math, we have around 45 to 50% of students showing growth, growth being meeting or exceeding the composite score they had in the fall. And so that's definitely an area to address, so we're starting with a goal of, for next year, we'll be looking at a goal of 55% of students meeting or exceeding their composite score in reading by the end of the year, and 50% by the end of the year for math's composite score, and this is for the kindergarten and first grade students. For second through eighth grade, we do have the NWA MAP Assessment, and so with MAP, we're looking at growth for MAP, and we follow cohort data to determine goals each year. So the goals for, the goals for reading and math were included in the memo, and they reflect the growth that each grade level cohort should have made by the end of this school year. Side note, not really a side note, but something important to note, is that this year we started using a new platform for MAP, and that new platform aligns the assessment MAP Assessment better with grade level standards, so that when students are having the test adapted to, if they answer a question correctly and it gives them a harder question, it's now a harder question at the locus of their grade level. What would often happen, an easy way to explain is what would often happen is in fourth or fifth grade, students might get math questions correct, and as it adapted, it would give them questions of things they've never been exposed to from sixth grade or seventh grade standards. The new platform will give you questions that dig deeper into grade level standards or go into the next grade level, but at a range of where you would, kids would have been exposed to it. So it gives them a better chance of achieving closer to what we're teaching, and so we'll see better alignment with how we're teaching. What this new platform did, though, is, and it was for both reading and math, what NWA realized is reading scores, when compared to previous norms, the 2020 norms, which are the norms we use currently to compare for percentiles and for growth, reading scores weren't impacted, and you could still compare this year's scores with the new platform to previous year's scores. But math was impacted, because with math, if you're giving information closer to the area of instruction, more kids are scoring higher, and so NWA saw a lot of growth. When you compare it to the 2020 norms, it's not comparing equally, so they have to do a conversion table, they did one for fall, they did one for winter, now that schools are closing, they're finishing up the spring one, and it will also include in there then a conversion table for district-level growth as well. So you'll see on the report card, it says TBD, because we don't have the MAP conversion table yet, to be able to see if we met growth when you're comparing apples to apples. But then you can see for reading, you can see for reading that we did, were approaching our growth in reading, in that we had two of the sixth grade levels that tested that met their growth targets, and then four were under their growth targets. Then for IAR, we have preliminary data in on our Illinois Assessment and Read Data Test, and preliminary assessments are showing that we are looking like we have exceeded our reading goal of 69% meeting or exceeding standards. Preliminary scores are showing that it's about in the 70% of students meeting or exceeding in ELA, and then we wait for those scores to be finalized and unembargoed, so that we're sure that those are the definite scores once the state does all their data scrubbing and everything. In math, our goal was 60%, and the preliminary scores are showing that we had 59% meet or exceed, so right there, but not there. I am meeting this summer with the principals in every building to talk about their individual scores, and then Martha and I are also meeting to talk about the district-level scores and the subgroup scores. Those principal meetings I'm having are talking about the areas of strength they saw in their scores, as well as areas for growth, and what they would like to do next. and what they would like to do next year, as well as how I can support the work that they're going to do next year. Had my first meeting with April May and Chris Harvallis this week, and it was a wonderful conversation with a lot of great ideas for implementation beginning in the fall. And then when we look at placement at the high schools, so those are all of our growth and achievement pieces of the things that are in our locus of control. When we look at placement for high school and how the work we do in District 96 prepares our students for high school placement, you can see that students who were in E L A eight exceeded our goal of 33% of those students scoring on the placement test high enough to place into Honors English nine. And then you can see that for students who were in advanced E L A eight, that the goal is 90%, and we exceeded that as well. So in E L A, we are placing a significant number of students into Honors English nine. In math, students who completed advanced Math eight, at least 90% of them also placed into Honors Geometry for the high school level. And then for Math eight, we had a goal of 67% of our students placing by score into Honors Algebra from Math eight core. And we did not make that 67%. We actually were about a third of the students who were in Math eight, on their scores placed into Honors Algebra. As explained last year, though, same holds true this year. These are placement scores. So this is just how the kids placed on these assessments. But there's still collaborative conversation that happens between our teachers and Riverside Brookfield High School. And so while students may not have scored high enough to get into algebra or Honors Algebra through collaborative conversations, some of those classes, a lot of those students actually are going to be placed in Honors Algebra because the teachers were able to explain, yes, they can do this work, yes, they will be successful. It's just for whatever reason, it didn't show in the test. So our K P I's are about the test placement, but know that we do have a higher percentage of students who do place, who we do have put into those classes.
Do we have theories on why there's a discrepancy there?
The test is a one-time deal. It's taken one day in October or November, so it's the beginning of the year. Eighth grade students, not all of them may have been ready for that material that's on that placement test. But then by the end of the year, when we get our end of the year curriculum-based measure tests are showing more success with these different concepts. Sometimes we just have students that don't test as well as they perform in class. My own child is that way. So we know that testing doesn't always... It shouldn't be the one thing that places a student in advanced learning or an honors course in the high school or any type of extra programming. You should always have different pieces of data.
Do we ever get any data back from the high school? Or would it make sense to have that conversation of, what is our success rate with testing placement versus teacher recommendation placement? Or would that be worth collecting?
We haven't had that conversation, but I think that's a very interesting question that I would like to pose to my counterpart at the high school. Thank you.
Can I just ask a few questions? I'm sort of... This is my first year of having a bit more understanding behind me. But could you maybe talk to us about goal setting? And like, why are goals for math are different than what they are for E L A? And why are goals for certain grade levels are different than they are for others?
Absolutely. So when setting goals for math and E L A and any of the assessments, whether it's FastBridge, Math, I A R, I'm looking at the data for that subject area. So math, we have regularly performed lower than E L A. And so looking at setting a stretch goal, so something that's attainable, but still higher, but because our math percentages are lower than E L A already, the goal's going to end up being lower than E L A. Because if I were to set a goal for 60-something percent in math to grow, and we start at maybe 45%, and that's just... That's not the case, that's just an example. If I set that for 60-something percent because English is around the 60s, that's not really attainable in math because we started lower. So that's why math and E L A are different because it's working with attainable goals based off of our history of scores. In terms of grade levels, it's the same thing. It's looking at the cohort of students and where they were performing last year. So if I look at fifth graders this year, when I look at fifth graders for the upcoming school year and set the goal, I'll look at how they've performed from second to fourth grade, but then also look at how does fifth grade on average perform over the course of time and work to find, again, a stretch goal that's still attainable, but does push us to continue to push our kids to grow.
Okay. And so because our goals in math, like, do you think at some point we would... We should have goals in math and reading be consistent?
That would be the goal, yes.
Okay. And what's to keep us from getting to that goal?
Nothing keeps us from getting to that goal. It's just we have to... It's kind of like our subgroups. The lower end, you have to grow faster than the higher end that you still want to grow. So we have to make twice as much growth in math as we are in E L A, and we're not there yet, but that's something that we continue to work on. And through these principal conversations, those are the plans that we're putting in place as leaders and then how I can support the building leaders so that we can have that faster math growth.
Okay. And so why it differs on grade level by grade level, just so I make sure I understand this, is just because you're looking at how that group has performed historically and setting a goal based on that data, right?
Correct.
Got it, okay. And then why we're using I A R to track student achievement, why don't we also use I A R as a measure of growth? Like, looking at similar performing districts and their growth and comparing that for our report card?
One of the things we talked about when we were setting our K P I's and working with EDLS with Don White and Gary Zabelka to set our goals is that we didn't want to create more goals than we could manage. So since we have other growth goals, we used achievement for this one, for I A R, but growth for MAP, which is three times a year. So we can see that growth, and if we're making the growth in the winter and work towards it in the spring for that final assessment, we're using achievement for I A R made more sense because if you're looking at growth, we don't have any formative marks to show how we're doing towards getting to that growth.
Got it, okay. Okay. The other question that I had is just around, like, going back to our discussion on chronic absenteeism. That's not incorporated into our strategic plan goals report card. Why did we choose instead to go with like the daily attendance rate rather than to go with something that actually is on the state report card?
So, yeah.
Am I going back and forth?
Yeah, we'll go to... We'll talk about that at goal two. Because I was just gonna also just, for clarity, I know we didn't put the number that you reported, and I know we talked about that.
It's in the memo, though, I think. I'm gonna double check right now.
Do we want to put it on the report card or the scorecard? Or do we not, because it's not official?
I was pointing once it was unembargoed, but we did put it in the memo so that four members were aware.
All right. Anything else about goal one?
Just a quick question or perhaps observation on my part. And when you were talking about the discrepancy between language, English, and math, it seems to me, as of the number of years that have been on this, there's always been a discrepancy there. Am I remembering that correctly?
You are remembering that correctly, and it's something we continue, to Selena's point, something we continue to work on. And we have to just accelerate our math growth while still growing in English Language Arts as well.
I'm curious, not to deviate too much from this scorecard, but I recall receiving the email that kind of described this issue with the math portion of the MAP tests and the new platform and the conversion chart. And I don't think I fully understood. So obviously, this is not something that districts that use the new platform anticipated happening. What other issues? Is it creating other issues for us? Like, I don't know, advanced learning determinations or any other measures that we use it for?
It's not creating issues. It's just slowing the process down for different cases. Because we're waiting for the conversion tables, yes. But no other issues have been created. As in that, as the letter stated, for everyone who received the letter, it did state that the RIT score is the RIT score. That was not... That's not something that fluctuated. So if you want to see, did my child grow, you can look at their fall, winter, and spring RIT score and see that growth. What's fluctuating is that percentile, how they compare on a national level to their peers at the same grade level.
Thanks, yeah, that provides more clarity. Kind of glossed over that. I was like, ah, end of school year. I don't think about this later.
End of school year with lots of technical terms. I tried to make sure it wasn't too technical, but it's hard to explain that. It's hard to explain at all.
Appreciate the, you know, of course, the transparency as well, too, to families.
Any other goal one questions? All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm used to there being a podium here.
I know. I think it's pretty bare. I don't know. Is that it?
Where?
I will get it.
All right, so I can... I know Martha announced a lot more information, but then she and Don also covered a lot in terms of attendance. So I can start, maybe Selena, with your question about attendance being selected as a K P I. That was made right before I joined, but I was part of the kind of setting of the goal with our two consultants, Don and Gary. And I know the background of why it is selected is that, you know, we're looking at attendance and kids' presence in school as the, you know, one of the key points where they're going to make connections and feel like, okay, I'm a part of this community, I belong here. Candidly, you know, obviously, our... Historically, our chronic absenteeism numbers were not as discrepant as they are now or were last year. I know they're, you know, coming down this year. I think attendance as a measure really captures better the entirety of the school population, whereas those students who are chronically absent are just a smaller piece of the pie, so to speak, and can, in many respects, need more individualized and targeted interventions versus global attendance encouragement incentives as well and practices. But I think that's why it was initially selected as attendance as the kind of global measure of, are we getting kids to school? So that we can make sure that, you know, they're developing their relationships with peers and adults and building the school skills. And I know we talked about this last week. We were putting this data together. It's interesting that our overall attendance numbers are strong, right? And we're talking about 93.9% and then higher than that. And we even had to pause, it's like, wait. But then it's like, of those students that are not regularly attending, how many are chronically absent? It is interesting to me because I think chronic absenteeism has gained all kinds of national attention as an important indicator about sort of something that's not going right, post-pandemic particularly. I do wonder if we should add, like, relate that... Like, we could easily sort of create under 2.1, sort of two measures. I mean, you know, it is in the state report card. So it has become this, like, very looked at number, right? Yeah, yeah. And we're going to keep reporting it, whether it's in our K P I's or not.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I wonder if we should integrate it there?
Yeah, we certainly can.
But then you have to set a goal, right?
Yeah. And I guess, you know, one of the things we talked about back then is that the board input around K P I's is really important. So, you know, others' thoughts, like, you know, sort of... Right, you have to kind of make a prediction, right? You have to figure out what's attainable.
I mean, you could do it on a relative basis, too, right? Like, we want to see improvement of a certain amount over a given year, rather than stating an absolute number.
Yeah, I certainly think I would connect with Don and Gary on to help kind of frame it in terms of they have access to national trends as well and could help take that deeper dive into...
Have to see that.
Historic data, but then we can't discount the pandemic. So that's why I'm looking at that national and other districts, too. Like, where...
I would wonder at some point, are we talking about such a small population that the numbers might start to get a little noisy at the bottom? If you follow me, meaning that, you know, one or two people could swing the numbers quite a bit.
Right, and... Yeah, I know. I mean, it's...
And maybe we're not there yet. I believe we were there pre-pandemic, but...
I think realistically, like, this isn't... Obviously, we'd all... We would love to have every student in school every day consistently. This is because of extenuating circumstances. I think this is realistically a number that will never be zero or even 1%. Like, there are just things that go beyond our capacity to control for. But it's not unreasonable to set a goal for continuing to bring that number back down. Would the board like to see it there? Like, does it feel meaningful in that way? I mean, I think it's a meaningful number, but we talked about bringing it trimester by trimester. And but noting it there seems appropriate, potentially.
I feel like I would like to see it. I think the state has recognized that it's an important metric. And I do not have any more experience than all the people that set those metrics of importance. And so I'm inclined to think it's important as well.
Yeah.
I think it could be. I think the goal is going to be tough because I think, like you said, we can't discount the fact that there's been a pandemic, but that maybe that baseline 9% is that group of students that's got extenuating things that are going to make them chronically absent. But like, looking for continued improvement every year in that number. I mean, I think the number this year really kind of shows that maybe we've, like, eliminated that confusion about, like, how long is supposed to keep my kid out of school for being sick? Or, you know, the less of the, like, oh, this stuff isn't available on Zoom while I'm homesick, so maybe I really should go to school. So, I mean, I think it... Yeah, I think it could be a part of it, especially because it's on the state report card.
Yeah.
I think it'll be hard. I mean, well, you set the goal, but like, I mean, I think it would be hard to get back to that 9%, but maybe.
But I think, and whether that's aspirational or realistic, we probably need a little time to digest that.
Yeah.
Sure. But I think it makes some sense, yeah. Just as a reminder that we are continuing to work on it and that we certainly are looking for it to there, you know, to not go back up to where it was in an immediate post-pandemic year. You know, that we're looking for continued decrease.
Well, there's no reason we can't use that same language.
Exactly.
Maintain or improve.
Right.
I mean, that's...
Yeah.
We don't... We certainly don't want it to go down.
Yeah.
Or increase. We don't... We don't want it. We don't want the numbers of children who are chronically absent to increase.
Very right, yeah. And I think some clear efforts are being made. And so, you know, reasonably hopeful, not hopeful, you know, planning that interventions make a difference. Yeah. Pete and I actually met today together because we are going to have some time on our August Administrator Retreat, as we call it, Retreat to the Ames Library. Sorry to West Forty this year and maybe... Oh, that's right. I'm sorry. To West Forty. Pardon me. But we participated and are continuing to. We still have one more session in this national cohort, like Martha was saying. And our goal in our... That we started today in our first meeting in July was to kind of distill some of the major points of that work into some proposals for us as a district for this year, wanting to keep it reasonable but tangible in terms of changes. And so I think you can expect to see a little bit more consistent communication from, if you consider multiple schools, from the... At the district level and at a billing level in terms of helping parents to, like we said before, understand that, you know, one or two days here and there add up to, you know, specific percentages of lost learning. And some data around if you miss, you know, kids who miss five days in the first semester of school are, like, you know, testing up to half a year behind students if it goes over three years, you know? Those kind of nuggets of information, not as a whole, you know, report. Those kind of, kind of nuggets of information, not as a whole, you know, report to read in the first week of school when everyone is up there most calm, but sprinkled across the year consistently so that you're just kind of getting a consistent message of the importance of attendance. Moving away from that kind of automated letter format to more personalized approaches from teachers, from building administrators, to say, you know, help me understand what we can do to support, better tracking on our end of what the reasons are for student absences, so that if we have a student who's out for a medical situation, we're able to connect with the right people to do some homebound services if it's an actual medical need, or if we have a student who's missing every, every other Friday for a soccer tournament, or a family that's missing for vacation, we can reach out with a different message. And then, again, just emphasizing, yes, we have a lot of things going on, but school is really important. So just some strategies, like I said, that Pete and I will work through this summer and then share with the district team to come to consensus on what are we comfortable with moving forward for next year as a more targeted approach. Any other questions about absenteeism? All right, our next goal was regarding our screener, the People's Attitudes towards Selkton School. Did go ahead and change names right in the middle of our first administration this year to Renaissance, but everything else about, the questions and goals remain the same. Our goal this year was to maintain or improve the by-building averages for feelings about school, attitudes to teachers, and attitudes to attendance. And our average spring scores compared to last year's scores, building by building, either maintained or slightly improved for each of our five district schools, which was our, our goal and good to see. And all of those scales, or all of those scores are well within the average range post pandemic norms that this screener has adapted. I'll be meeting with principals individually this summer, in July and early August, to look specifically at their billing data. Even at the billing level, we don't have any, any of the nine scales that were in red or orange. So it's red, orange, yellow, and green. So we have some subgroups or grade levels that have one or two scales, maybe that are in yellow, which is, like, slightly at risk. And so at a billing level, be working with principals to say, all right, let's look at this. You know, we have two grades in the yellow for this domain, one or some interventions we can think of for that. So that just continues to be a good pulse on how kids are feeling about coming to school every day and their abilities when they get there. And then our final goal, our final KPI, was the Castle Survey for Systemic District Approach to Implementing SEL, just the most straightforward name ever. Basically, it is a pretty lengthy rubric that helps districts to kind of keep their eye on the prize of systemic SEL practices, rather than just saying, we got a curriculum, we got half an hour a week devoted to it, we are good to go. It's really looking at what are the practices like at the school, in the classroom, in whole school activities? What are the staff demonstrating to each other? What are the resources we're providing to this? How are we involving parents and community? All these different areas for us to keep, keep working on. So this year, we were looking for growth in staff modeling of SEL and evidence-based SEL programs and practices. The rubric is a scale of one to four, and they're all, each area has its own, like, description of what a one is and what a two is. But basically, one boils down to, I don't really see any evidence that we're doing this in our district right now, and a four being like, this is well established, we're doing great. So in, in those two areas, we really saw nice growth this year from one point five to two point seven five in staff modeling of SEL, and from a two to a three in the area of evidence-based programs. So that was growth in the areas that we were specifically looking at this year, but it was also good, we, you know, I went back and just looked at the areas that we targeted last year, shared vision and professional learning, and we continue to see growth on that rubric in those areas, too. So that was just reassuring to me that it's, even as we are, you know, devoting our professional learning sessions this year to adult SEL, we're not losing sight of the other, the other pieces. And we're continuing to improve the way we're communicating that additional SEL work to the district as well. Any questions? I can turn it over to Don. Thanks, Martha.
Thank you.
Well, I will be covering goal three, high quality staff. Three point one of high quality staff, that goal was really surrounding, that KPI was surrounding percentage of teachers that have a master's degree or higher. That statistically within the district, I put a link for the report card, it's been pretty static for a while. So really maintaining that percentage, which is sixty-four percent, based on a three-year-old, the average, as reported by the ISB report card. Overall, with the report card pretty much maintained from last year, there was one area where we kind of went down from exceeding to meeting, and I'll get to that in a little bit. Three, two, and three, three focus on our hiring practices. And what our diverse workforce group really focused on this year was documenting our practice and identifying that standardizing on those practices with our, with, you know, our hiring managers, people who hire, administration who hire. So we, we began really, I began by meeting with, we're meeting with one of the committee members, which is Todd Gierman, and just really documenting one principal's process. And then sharing out with the other principals of, okay, let's, let's try to reach consensus on a process. Many of the forums, I mean, pretty much all of our HR forums are consistent within our, our hiring practices. But we're, where we're still working on reaching consensus is, well, are we being consistent with the questions that we're asking? And then also identified that it'd be really good to, made a recommendation that we should add hiring rubrics. And what the benefits that rubrics provide, by eliminating bias, it also provides some legal protections if there's ever any, you know, if there's ever a question to your hiring practices. And again, really focusing on the standardization of that. So the work to be done is really with the administration and groups. Right now, it's with the building principals, because most of our hires are, you know, classroom, are teaching staff. And, and then from there, also working on, well, from there, we go to peer professionals, administration, when hiring administrators. And being able to document in those, how the process within each hiring group, which will also benefit, you know, when we eventually have some new principals. Now we have a documented process to train on, and this is how we, this is our hiring process in District Ninety-Six. So we're not where we need to be, but we continue to approach that. Let's see, three point four focused on really exit interviews, which the exit interview process that we put in place allows us to really reach a hundred percent of those that are voluntary leaving the district. We do an exit interview survey, it's optional for them, but we get good feedback from it. So we've been hitting one hundred percent of those individuals that voluntarily leave the district with a survey that was developed last year. And that has been really operationalized now, it's been turned over to Don and Blauclen in, in our HR department. And so now that's just part of her process when people exit. I know Martha has met individually at times with staff that are, that are leaving to have, you know, offering to, to meet with them individually as well. Three, six, three, six focuses on compensation for certified and peer professional employee groups. We know that this data, in terms of where we are, will really probably come out more, there'll be a lot of data coming out in the next year or so, as, you know, going into negotiations. So this is something we're just, you know, really, that's kind of TBD, but we'll report on that, be better able to report on it next year. For professional development, this is where we went from an exceeding to kind of meets. We did have a little bit of a dip in the, in the surveys, post PD sessions, in the two areas where it had been identified, we wanted to increase, really move people from those does not meet into the, into the meets in terms of, or, or, into the strongly agree to agree categories. And that, that dipped a little bit. We were down, you know, a few percentage points in each, in each area. Again, there's slight decrease from, from last fiscal year, but the overall remains, remains high. And so we kept that as a going down from exceeding to meeting. Next, three point eight pertained to the Employee Satisfaction Survey. We had been using Vital Networks, and over the course of the few years, it, I'm not going to knock Vital Networks, it, there were some slight modifications to how they were administering the survey and how they were scoring the survey. So it did really left, presented some challenges in how do we really track how we're doing in certain areas? So we did identify a, a survey from EAB, which we are members, we have a, we already have a membership with them, and they have a lot of different tools that, that we've used within the district. And so this year, the committee also looked at that survey, and I think initially it was met with, well, without looking at it, well, why are we changing? And, but then after they looked at the survey, there actually were very positive feedback from the survey itself. And I know Martha also presented it to other groups, and so the decision was made to go to the EAB, EAB survey. The nice thing about it is, we, we really have control over that administration of that, and so we can report out the data very quickly from that, where we were waiting for Vital Networks to provide us that data. I mean, we'll be able to, within a matter of days, be able to start looking at the data as opposed to waiting, you know, weeks or longer in order to get the information back from Vital Networks. So perhaps from, with the change in the survey, we'll, we'll possibly be able to develop a goal surrounding that and the information that we get from it. And then finally, we kind of identified what could be possible, it's a draft KPI. As, as our leadership was meeting, it just really came up that, you know, in terms of our hiring practices, that we hire to really address the needs of students, and do we want to kind of memorialize that to know that this is something that the district believes in? But now, coming up with a goal that, that shows that we are in fact doing that, it's something that really haven't begun researching it, but really looking to have it memorialized within our strategic plan, so then we can continue to report on it. And I think the, with the additions of the.
The three EL bilingual, the one social worker, the one coach, like, I think that's, just as we were doing some end of year reflection, it's very significant that the board approved those positions. They're very much designed to obviously support students in, in direct ways that are needed. And I think it's worth noting somewhere, you know, I mean, it is worth noting, I don't mean just, I think it is, it is worth noting, should be noted. And so that's what we talked about, like, where does it belong? It's kind of like, Selena, what you were saying about chronic absenteeism, like, it's something we talk about, it's something that a lot of effort, time, effort, money has been, has been, you know, directed that way. So, you know, we could do it, and we could also just list it as, like, evidence bullet points, like, you know, twenty-four or twenty-three, twenty-four school year hired, three EL bilingual, one social worker, and one coach, or something like that. Adding FTE to a school district is, is not a common, everyday kind of practice. Thoughts from all of you on that?
That makes sense.
So it doesn't have to be a percentage, or it could just be a.
It should be identified, certainly, it's an investment.
Yeah.
That's it, any questions on goal three?
On three, five, it says the superintendent will annually report the results of these exit interview surveys. Have we just not been over the, or, is that something that's reported to us on the board, or reports to who?
It's brand new this year that we have an online, there's a very small number that, that's a good question.
Well, I think it became actually, it, but it was subject to, I believe, as long as the number of exit interviews exceeds six participants, and we haven't had six participants yet.
Leave in any given year?
Yeah, we've had six that have left, but not six that have participated in the survey.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought you said that we have near a hundred percent participation in this.
No, we have, no, we have a hundred percent where we offer them to, to take the survey. Yeah, that's, that was the goal, because we can't control how many people respond. I know when I did it last year, I would make sure that we did a hundred percent of everybody who voluntarily left, voluntarily left, and followed up regularly, like, without, without badgering. Because we also know that we were in, in reaching out to them, reaching out to them with their district email address, which is going to go away at, you know, not too long after they leave. So identifying that we have kind of this short window to try to get that information back. And we, we haven't had a huge amount of people voluntarily, voluntarily leaving the district, so.
Okay.
But we could easily report out on the data, you know, it's been.
I mean, if it's not, like, if it's not a reasonable sample size, it's probably not going to be that instructive, it's just going to be more like.
But I think what we'll have especially, you know, we'll have cumulative, I think even at the end of next year, we'll have, you know, no, it's not over, it's not a year, year over year report, but over the past three years, this was the feedback of the, like, eight participants, ten participants that we have. That could possibly be some good data.
Yeah, so look at, so look at that, like, multi-year aggregate, because that might be the only way we get to a reasonable sample size.
Is that number six realistic?
I think it was done to be sort of protective of confidential or individual feedback, you know, so like, rather than sharing individual feedback. But let's think on that one.
I mean, it doesn't sound like it is, right?
I mean, we do not ask for, you know, you know, what grade did you teach, you know, I mean, we've tried to keep it to where they, they understood that there was a high level of anonymity to it. And there was nothing in there that would easily identify them based on their, because.
That's not just certified staff.
Yeah, and ultimately, you want to, you want to hear from them.
I would say review the responses to see if there's anything personally identifiable, and, you know, if there is something, then maybe you make it vague.
Yeah, I would, I would, the full survey result, we could do, again, we could do an aggregate of.
Trying to see if it questions, like, is there areas that's just a numerical rating?
No, it was, it was very much.
Did you feel supported, is there areas you didn't feel supported, it's pretty, yeah.
Yeah, like, would you recommend, you know, would you recommend working in District Ninety-Six, too?
Yeah, well, the goal, as it's written, isn't asking for the board to see the results of every exit interview.
Right.
It's asking for the superintendent to aggregate the data and present it to us. So it wouldn't be identifiable, potentially.
Right, exactly, no, it's.
The six hurdle is maybe not realistic.
Meaning it was a confidential, let's think on that one.
Yeah, we could, we could always just report out on, you know, again, the aggregate data every year. I mean, it's, it might only be two or three submissions, but it would, you know, still be able to provide an aggregate. I could even go back and provide what would be the aggregate from last year.
Other themes and trends across the years, that's what we'd be looking for from a board level.
Any questions? Jim?
No, actually, it's goal four, yeah, so it's family and community partnerships. And you'll see what I've noted here on the scorecard are just pieces of evidence. We did a survey two years ago, we decided not to do the survey annually. Our thoughts are that we would administer the survey again next year. We used a sort of family pride engagement satisfaction tool. But then beyond that, we really looked at just evidence-based items in which we have accomplished this year. So again, I think just sharing and building that partnership with the PTAs and PTOs specifically around welcoming new families and a parent ambassador approach to doing that. The annual Family Learning Night has kind of been, I'll say institutionalized now, running it two years in a row. And it's my understanding that's, you know, bringing.
you know, bringing back at something that used to happen many years ago, to have Family Learning Night. I think there's a good momentum around that. One Book One School event at all four elementary schools, that felt real important to create that, to make sure that that was happening at all four schools. It's just a real, it's a great celebration of literacy and children's love for learning and ways of bringing our family and really our whole school community together. We are near to completion of the family and community engagement guidelines that you all saw last board meeting, and I plan to bring that likely to the July meeting, assuming they're complete, they're very near complete, but I have one more meeting about that, and so in case there's any tweaks or changes, I'll bring that to you in the future. We've gotten some nice feedback about, from our staff about the efforts around, around all of that. Our ups, facility, or, sorry, our website will be updated this summer, that's coming soon, Don, right? It's July, July?
Probably over the weekend, or July 1st.
Okay. And we talked about that, it's just a tool for family communication and perhaps a way that can build more two-way communication and just more engagement about the school district and the kinds of things going on in the school district. And then an idea or plan to conduct the family engagement survey once again next year. And our, our goal with the survey is not even so much looking at trend data, but what are the pieces from the survey that we can then find actionable around making improvements around family engagement? Any questions about Goal Four? Now Jim's turn.
Goal Five is the stewardship of resources and, well, develop and sustain effective, efficient, and equitable use of all resources to optimize the operations for improvement, student achievement, and fiscal responsibility. So we're on target with the first five, and I had a number six there. And 5.1, in January, we went over the FY23 audit, and the numbers in there showed that we will meet the goal in 5.1, and we expect the same result for the current year. We're just about to wrap up. We're getting close to finalizing the first draft of the FY25 budget that we'll go over in the next couple months and approve in the next couple months. And that relates to 5.2 and 5.5, so that our budget, overall expenses will be, will increase less than CPI, as well as the subset of the technology budget. Our projects this summer so far are going smoothly, and we expect those to be within the original budget. And then the last two, 5.4 and 5.6, we've added some resources to respond to the maintenance work orders as they come in. So one of the clerks and business offices supporting the facilities more, since the people who close the work orders aren't always in a computer to acknowledge the work orders. So with a little extra help, we've been able to get a response on average less than 24 hours. Still takes a little more time to complete them. And then 5.6 is the work orders for technology, and that's doing much better than a whole business day. So that's why there's a blue dot there instead of the green ones. So far, still good. Any questions?
I wonder if in a similar fashion, what we're talking about adding, we've hired additional ELA instructors, I mean, is there anything worth noting of, we took on the management of lunch ourself here, and we're providing, you know, lunch to all facilities, hot lunch facilities. And is, maybe that's not the right spot here, I don't know, but it seems like that's a significant milestone as well.
It was the original strategic plan goals, but we did accomplish getting NSLP, so we get reimbursement for meals at each school.
And, and I would say that's a worthwhile milestone, in my opinion.
I have that in.
I actually think that relates to the opportunity and equity, which, you know, is kind of in all of ours, all, it goes across all the, all five goals. You know, it is, it's going over this and spending sort of end-of-year reflecting, that's another noted accomplishment. And I agree, it's, it's worth noting, and maybe it's just that, maybe it's a, you know, other noted accomplishment, you know, National School Lunch Program provided at all five schools.
Chicken nuggets are very well-reviewed in my household.
It's actually pretty startling, if you look at the data for the lunches served between September to May, how much they increased over the year. They're doing something right. Kids are wanting to eat that.
And it really was something that we were told, it's not, it's never going to work. Your schools aren't, you know, your cafeteria, multipurpose room, lunchroom, gymnasium at Blythe, you know, are just not suited for it, and the team is really worked wonders, and this made it happen, and family, right, like you're saying, families are, are literally buying it, you know, buying the lunch, so, or getting the lunch, which we also, I mean, it was, it was important to make sure that we were serving that better quality lunch for all our children that qualify for free to reduce lunch, and then having it as an option for families that would just like it as a convenience.
A little bit of compromising everywhere, but everyone wanted it to succeed, so.
Well, and then it seems like, you know, we had a, we had an outside vendor whose job it is to make that work, and they couldn't make it work.
They, I think we learned what we needed from them, and it made more sense to move forward on our own. So we, we found that there are people that can fill that position.
So, kind of the classic purpose of a consultant is they give you some advice, and here's some things you can do to improve, and then we take it over and we're responsible for it.
Right.
We didn't necessarily bring them in as a consultant, and we brought them in to run the place, but it was...
True.
Indefinitely.
That's another role of a consultant, is to try and never leave, I think.
I was kind of wondering if maybe they really didn't want to have the day-to-day operations, you know, like, maybe they did want to turn it over to us, we want, we thought we wanted and needed them, and then...
And it's not a simple thing to do.
You've got a whole book on that, Jim, that's good.
There's a lot of rules with the state that are kind of set up so that it's not easy to outsource it. And I think we did okay without outsourcing it, so.
Good to hear.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the strategic plan scorecard? Martha, all good news?
All good news, and that, that is the full report.
There is no new business or discussion. Kathy, do we have any new public comments?
We do not.
That being said, future meeting dates, July 3rd is canceled, July 17th, regular business meeting in this room, potential closed session, August 7th, Committee of the Whole at Hollywood, August 21st, back in this room. So we are off for a little more than a, about a month. Any other comments? Otherwise, end of the meeting.